Morning. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order, August the 8th, 2023. And welcome to invited, to invited elected officials, Judge Luanne Nolan and Sheriff Gary Gullidge. Solicitor, I always say Judge Nolan. You, is that a promotion?
Yes.
Solicitor Luanne Nolan. And Rodney, if you bring the list forward and everybody turn their phones off as Marshals bringing the citizens wishing to speak. Thank you, sir. And if you'll stand with me, we'll begin as always with a pledge. Heavenly Father God, who are we that you'd be mindful of us? And yet you've given us another day, a day that we can rejoice in and be glad because we know who's in control. We thank, thank you for our staff and our public service and how they stand between us and bad things that could happen in this county. So we just pray for your guidance in this meeting. Decisions would be pleasing to your will. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes, the July 25th, where did July go? Work session minutes and the July 25th board meeting minutes are available for your review. Also, the July 25th public hearing minutes from the 9:00 AM and the 6:30 PM are available for your review. The announcements will begin with the Team Paulding Employee of the Month Christina Kelly with Paulding E-911. And let's enjoy the video together.
She has been with us for 19 years in August. She's a great leader. She's always willing to help all the way down to the front line on dispatch. She doesn't care about working on night shift, day shift. She's always willing to help and she never gets recognition for that. She makes my day to day super easy. She is very clear on her expectations. She's a great leader, great boss. She's such a good example. She's always willing to listen and help out any way that she can. She is the roots to this 911 center. She does all of the things from radios to helping with staffing. She has a little bit of hand in everything. She is literally 911. Christina is always willing to do little pick-me-ups. Like a few days ago, for example, she came in my office and I'd worked, I came in at 6:00 AM and I had to stay in the room a little later. And she was like, you need an afternoon candy break? And she brought me some M&amp;M's. And it's just the little things like that that most people wouldn't think about, but it just shows like she cares and she's here for you and things like that. I feel like she's always willing to go out of her way to recognize other people, but never takes the time to think about herself and like the things that she does. She's always like, oh, we need to recognize this person for this and they did a great job with this, but never thinks about all the amazing things that she does on a day to day. Christina, you deserve this award more than anyone else. You never think about yourself and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you so much.
Well, she's not in the room. Can we clap anyway? As employees of the month are fun. Board of Commissioners would like to present the Paulding 811 Day proclamation to Joe Ordway at AT&amp;T, Paulding UCC Chairman, and Andrea Bowles, Andre, I guess is the way you pronounce it, Andrea Bowles of Paulding County DOT Utilities Coordinator and Paulding UCC Secretary. So if y'all would come forward, we'd like to give you this proclamation. Can I say your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
Close enough?
Uh huh.
All right. Well, you're probably gonna make some. I'll read the proclamation and then you know, say whatever you'd like to say. Paulding County Board of Commissioners, Dallas, Georgia, Paulding 811 Day. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to the public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas the Paulding County Utilities Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System in an effort to reduce these damages. And finally, whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Paulding County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Therefore, I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August the 11th, 2023, as 8/11 Day in Paulding County and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Paulding County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. So congratulations that we want, you know, want to continue this. And you want to make some further comments?
Sir, I guess I could.
Yes, sir. This is Joe Ordway, right?
Yes, sir. Chairman Carmichael, thank you. Board members, thank you very much for recognizing this as 811 Day. We do this twice a year. I wish we could do this almost every day because as you know, we have a lot of outages. I know my DOT partners here definitely understand that. But we want to keep everybody safe. We want to keep people connected. But basically, just wanted to reiterate, thank you very much and we greatly appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
You'll get to frame that and put it in your living room. Angela, did Tabitha take away your job? The Board of Commissioners would like to present, why we just did that. No invited guests, bid awards, none, reports from committees and departments, none, public participation on agenda items, no one has signed up. Under the consent agenda, consideration of the following consent agenda items. Item two is the, it's only one, but it's item number two on our agenda, is approval of the dedication of 13.671 square feet, that's .314 acres, of new sanitary sewer easement area to Paulding County to maintain the sanitary sewer and transfer of 11,230 square feet, which is 2.58 acres of abandoned sanitary sewer easement to ADC Hiram LLC. Would, would anyone like to move that consent agenda item to regular business?
Mr. Chairman, before you take that, just to clarify, is that 13,671? I'm no engineer, but I figured it was a little bit larger than 13 square feet.
I believe you called something else.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for catching that. So it's approval of the dedication of 13,671 square feet. Moving on to old business, which we rarely have, but we have two items here. Item three is discuss the development agreement, name change for Bickers Construction Incorporated to Breaman Ventures LLC in Paulding County for a developer-funded 956,000 capital contribution for the Highway 120 booster station upgrade. It's located in Post One. This is carried over from the July 25th meeting. Item four is discuss the follow-
Excuse me, one minute. That's also located in Post Three, part of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
The previous one, it's in Post One and Three.
Mr. Chairman. I think Ray's prepared to speak on the old business.
Okay, that's, that's why you're up there. Okay. Ray Wooton, the Director of our Water and Sewer, pleased to have you report.
Yes. Bickers Construction, also when we were going through the execution, y'all approved them to contribute 956,000, excuse me. Bickers Construction was executing their document and they've got more than one company that they signed for. So the Bickers Construction Company requested that we assign it to another one of their companies. And so the contract's the same. All we're doing is we're changing the company for which Bickers Construction will be signed, or the Bickers family will be signing for.
Okay, any questions for Ray? Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Old business number four is discuss the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through donation to the Georgia Public Safety Training Center. So also carried from the July 25th meeting and-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll be happy to speak on that if you, if you need me to.
Yes.
As you mentioned, that item was on the consent agenda for the last meeting and it was approved by the Board for auction or trade, I believe. And I had a conversation with Sheriff Gullidge after that meeting and they were wanting to actually surplus those vehicles to the Public Safety Training Center in Forsyth for them to utilize them in their EVOC training. And so we wanted to make sure that we were very transparent as to where those vehicles were going. So we wanted to bring it back for the Board to take up a reconsideration at the afternoon meeting. Did I about cover it, Sheriff? It is a great opportunity for us to make that, that surplus donation down there. And that, that course they have down there is pretty intense. So they, they definitely need a lot of vehicles and a lot of parts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just clarification from me, is that go to the training center itself or is it go to Forsyth County?
It'll go to the training center, State Training Center. It's, it's located in Forsyth, just off 75.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that report. And moving into new business, item five is discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-16 adopting the county M&amp;O millage rate at 4.22 mils. And you want to do these one at a time? If you have to vote on them this afternoon, one at a time, so.
Okay, this is an annual process. So we have recently completed three public hearings regarding the millage rate. We are not proposing an increase in the millage rate. The millage rate is the same as it was in the previous year. It's been recommended at 4.22 mils. So unless you have any questions.
All right. Item six is discuss act to adopt Resolution 23-17 adopting the debt services millage rate at 1.20 mils.
So the county has an amount of debt and you're required to pass a millage rate that will pay the principal and interest on that debt. It's approximately $11 million and 1.2 mils will allow for the payment of those principal and interest payments for this year.
Any questions? Item seven is discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-18 adopting the fire tax millage rate at 2.3 mils.
In 2006, I believe, the voters approved a special district for fire service and that previous year millage rate was 2.5 and we're recommending 2.3 for the millage rate to fund the operations of the fire department in the upcoming year.
Item eight is discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-19 adopting the county's school tax millage rate at 17.675 mils.
This is a slight reduction. The, the school tax last year was 17.75 and in exchange to get them to lower the millage rate this year, they have offered a reduction in, or we have offered a reduction in the tax collection. So we've, we've reduced our revenue and in turn, they're going to pass that along to the, that savings along to the citizens in the millage rate reduction from 17.75 to 17.675. So the current year's 17.675, slight reduction from the previous year.
And item nine is discuss-
One more thing, I'm sorry. The, the school board sends you a letter. So the school board has sent us a letter. They go through the same process. So they've, they've held their three public hearings. They go through the exact same process. They send you a letter basically telling you, not asking you, to approve the millage rate that they have proposed that will fund their operations. So Justin, you can probably add a little more to this than, than I can, but I think it's been challenged in the courts previously as to whether you could do something different and the courts have upheld that you don't have an option.
Yes, that's exactly right. It's, they're the recommending authority for that particular rate and you have no discretion to do anything other than to adopt it, according to the Georgia appeals courts.
Their rollback rate though would, would have been something less than that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item nine, discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-20 authorizing the Tax Commissioner to retain a 2.09% fee for the collection of school tax.
So this is the reduction that I just mentioned. In the previous years, we've had a 2.5% collection and the idea is the collection is 69% of the taxes paid in Paulding is collected on behalf of the schools. So that collection fee is to offset the cost of the assessment tax commissioner, other costs that are associated with the collection of that fee, of that tax. And we have reduced this or agreed to reduce this from 2.5 to 2.09, again, to get a slight reduction for the, for the citizens of the county and the school tax.
Tabitha, I noticed there was some misunderstanding out in the public, maybe when they saw this on the agenda, that this would be in addition to their tax bill, but it's actually not. It's just intergovernmental agreement between us and the school board, correct?
That's correct.
The county government and the school board. Just wanted to make that clear for the public.
Yes, when they write their check to the Tax Commissioner for the school tax, it gets a little confusing as to whether they should even appear before you as in some of your hearings, I think they think you should be able to do something about that and you really can't. But they, they do remit their taxes to the Tax Commissioner. The Tax Commissioner in turn withholds a portion of that and passes it to 2.5. This year it'll be 2.09 before they submit that payment to the school system.
Thank you.
Item 10, discuss action to approve a contract with Kendall Supply Incorporated, excuse me, for construction services to install a situs base station in an amount not to exceed $65,000 from the renewal and extension fund located in Post Two. Mr. Ray Wooton.
Hello. We currently have 56,120 metered customers. The purpose of this base station is to put them on our automated system and build a pay station that will collect the information. This will help us to let citizens know if they've got leaks, but it will help us to also track our water loss. So this will take us from 14,000 up to 19,000 meters and we want to continue to build this system so they can help, help us in the long run to help citizens and be able to control water loss. The cost of it is $65,000 for the base station and that will come from the renewal and extension fund.
Any questions?
Ray, how much money does that save the water department in like time and salaries and that kind of thing?
I can't give you an exact number, but it saves on, no meter readers have to run the route anymore. We will have a meter tech that goes out if there are any issues, but the big savings is they can see a meter from the department. And if you're a resident and all of a sudden they see your leakage, your water going over a period of time, we can let you know that you've got an extended usage over nights when you may not be there indicating a leak. And we have certain things that will, alarms that will let us know that's occurring and we can text the customer, let them know you need to check this. And it also lets our daily crews respond faster if we see something. But as far as a actual number, that's, has not been currently calculated, but we can get a number for you.
Could be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
11 is discuss action to approve a development agreement between AMH Development, Georgia GC, I'll have to tell you what that means, TRS LLC in Paulding County for a developer-funded force main design and installation from the Cadillac lift station to the copper mine, or WRF located in Post One.
On this particular project, right now, the majority of flow that goes into our copper mine plant, all goes through the rake straw pump station. The water department's in the process of splitting that flow to where we're taking part of that flow down to the Cadillac pump station and building a line from Church Road, Mount Taver Church Road at Bobo, and then paralleling the existing and upsizing the existing main to a 20-inch main. And that will reduce the flow onto rake straw pump station by just over 40%. This development agreement will allow this project to go faster because it's in three phases. They are looking to build phase three in order to be able to do their development quicker because we have sewer of a sewer that will be available outside of the rake straw pump station. So this agreement is for that developer to design and build a new force main from the existing Cadillac pump station to the headworks at Copper Mine.
Developer funded.
Correct. They're going to do the design and construction.
Any questions?
Chairman, I wanted to say earlier, I had said that project was in one and three on number three, but actually I had, I mean, not number three, I'm sorry, number, I don't remember, oh, two, I guess. But actually, it was this number that where that project is also located in Post One and Three because Copper Mine is over on that side of 278. So just a little minor correction there. And the other one is right as it is in Post One.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Any questions for Mr. Wooton? Very well, we'll go to item number 12, discuss action to adopt fiscal year 2024 budget. Ms. Pollard, do you have any other comments on it?
Well, this is the day we've been waiting for, for the year. It's always good to get here. We start in February or March and we publish a budget June 1st for review to the public. We held a public hearing at the last meeting that is required by law and we have made a few minor revisions. They're all posted online since the June 1st budget. So we had the June 1st budget and then on August 1st, I did do a little, a few amendments to the budget. Most of those are to reduce the tack, the amount of revenues forecasted for the tax commission, the tax commissions that we discussed a few minutes ago. It's to bring some of your revenues in line with what's actually expected to happen because as you know, when you get to the end of the year, you can better forecast those revenues going forward. There were a few other changes. One of the things I want to mention, it wasn't mentioned in earlier meeting, but Paulding County is very aggressive in trying to receive grant money and intergovernmental money. And in one of our public hearings, it was recommended that we try to do that. I would, we have, grants are often very, sometimes they're good grants and sometimes they're not good grants. And I mean that by, there's one common factor in most grants and that is that they do not allow you to supplant. So if you're already providing a service, they will not pay you, give you grant money to provide the same service that you've been providing. However, they will allow you to add a service and they usually will provide you startup money to add that service. And then they require that when that grant goes away, you continue that service. So you have to be careful to make sure that that's a service that you want to provide. However, if anybody knows of a grant that we are not receiving, Paul, the number to Paulding County Finance Department is 770-443-7512. And I would love to be able to look into any grant that would possibly be out there. So we've gone through most of the revenues. There's been a little bit of an increase actually there to the, the proposed forecast did revenues. And then I've gone through and made a few slight changes to the expenses. And within those increases, we received a grant in between June 1st and August 1st that allowed for some capital improvements within the court system. That expense has been added and that revenue's been added. So they're, they're minor, very, very minor changes like that of things that have happened between June 1st and this August 1st date. Since August 1st, I have released a couple of additional information, but the budget as you, the, the actual numbers for the budget did not change from August 1st to the, to the most recent edition. It's some of the review data that, that has been changed. So you're adopting a budget for the general fund and you're adopting a budget for the fire, 911, a lot of your courts, all of your governmental funds is included in this budget adoption before you today. So if you have any questions.
Tabitha, do you, do you have an example of where you duplicate a service and they wouldn't pay it like, like you described a couple of minutes ago?
Yes, so if, sometimes you can find public safety grants. This is the easiest one that would, where they will allow you to hire additional officers, but if those officers are, you've got to be providing something that is not currently being provided. So it can't be a service that the officers are already providing. It has to be in addition to. Some of your courts might be another one where if you're already providing a service, they're not gonna, you're not eligible to apply for the grant for that service. But if you are adding a service, then they would allow for you to request those funds for adding that service, additional service. Most of the time it's positions. Most of the time those, those particular ones are positioned. So they won't- So they won't pay for the positions that you already have. They'll pay for positions that you're going to add and then you have to commit to continuing those services beyond the date of the grant that's being provided. Did I answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
This has been a very, we have a lot of department heads in the room and this has been very trying on all of them. So I appreciate them and the time that they've put into the budget and reviewing it and then sending me changes or, you know, this isn't right or we need to do this or we need to do that to make sure that it's correct. And I also want to thank each one of y'all because I don't know if the public really understands how much time you all spend in going through this process along with every other function of the county. So I was mentioning to Rebecca earlier that I can't tell you the times. I don't think I can count on both fingers and toes that the times I've heard, well, as a taxpayer in this county, and it's come from all of you, so this budget and millage rate, they're not taken lightly and I want the public to understand it's not taken lightly. It's very heavily evaluated.
And you do an excellent job getting it all together, pulling it together. I appreciate so much how accessible you are to each of us and to people who come here and if they have questions, you will talk to them and how reasonable you are and the fact that you are a virtual encyclopedia of knowledge about this budget. I have asked a lot of questions along the way, that's what I do, and I've challenged a lot of things because I want, just like everybody else up here, I want to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck. None of us enjoy increasing the budget, but it's just a necessity. People want the sheriff's department to show up if they call 911. They want the fire department to show up if they call 911 for a fire or an emergency. And, you know, and all the services that are demanded, they want good roads to drive on. It was funny, I got a lot of comments, you know, from the public and some of them said in the same thing, don't raise our taxes. Oh, but get out there and fix those potholes. And, you know, we get that. There's a balance there and you get that and I just appreciate all your long hours of work. I know you had a great weekend working on the budget this past weekend, so even when everybody else was out playing or something. So thanks.
And I would add, Sheriff Gullidge has volunteered after the 2:00 meeting to cuff you and make you go out to your car and go home early.
I have an audit that starts Monday, so that would not be a good idea.
Why does that not surprise us? I just ditto what Commissioner Galloway said. Item 13 is action to adopt Resolution 23-08 adopting amendments to Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the tethering of animals and spay-neuter requirements for classified dogs. Mr. Jason Phillips is an expert on this.
This is a change of pace from money and taxes. This is two amendments to the animal control ordinance at the request of animal control. The first one is that the amended ordinance will prohibit the tethering of your pets where you are also not in attendance. So if you're going to tether a dog, you need to be physically present with it and can't just rope it up and leave it there on its own. The second component of this amendment is that if you have an animal that gets classified as either a dangerous, dangerous or a vicious dog, then that dog will need to be spayed or neutered as a part of that process for continuing to maintain that animal. And that's it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Did I teach you that in law school?
I learned nothing about animal law in law school. All learned on the job.
There.
Our district attorney, though, apparently is jumping out of his seat to say that he's learned a lot about animal control.
He can have these.
Okay, that's the conclusion of regular business. No one has signed up for public participation on agenda items. I was remiss earlier in my recognition duties and overlooked recognizing Matt Rollins, I think, unless you stepped out and I didn't see you anymore. And also Kayla Amos, you know, I apologize, Kayla. These people are supposed to throw something at me, but they didn't, so it's your fault. Okay. Commissioners can have the floor here if there's any announcements or celebrations they want to share with the whole group, including those watching online.
I would like to wish my husband, Steve, a very happy birthday. I hope you're having a good time camping without me and hope to see you soon.
Anyone else?
Now Sandy, you was camping with him, right?
I was.
In all these bad storms, you came home and left him out there.
That was his wishes, not mine. I would have stayed. You know me better than that.
So schools, go ahead.
In fact, he just sent me a text saying he just signed up for two more days, so he must be really enjoying himself.
Fisher biting. We do have executive session today for real estate and I need a motion to adjourn, hold on before I finish that statement. We will adjourn after the executive session from the meeting, from the room across the hall. We won't be back in this big room. So someone make a motion to go to executive session for real estate.
I make a motion to go to executive session for real estate.
Have a motion by Commissioner Galloway. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dunn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned for executive session.